Open the Montpelier board directors meeting once a January 5th at like 6:32. First order of business is public comment. I cannot.
Have some newspaper reporters?
If anyone from the public wants to talk, speak up, otherwise there's no one in the room of McGrath.
And Christina.
And Christina. Oh, sorry. Scan to the left. All right, no public comment, we'll move on to consent agenda. Do I have? A? Motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
You're making a motion or you have one?
I'm making a motion.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? Yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now I'll move on to CCC governance and is that? Jody, who I see on the? The board?
Hi, Jody.
Hey, Jody, can you hear us okay?
I can, thank you, thanks for having me. I first want to apologize because the warnings that I actually need you to approve, I only sent to Libby yesterday. And then I realized, having been at the Washington Central Board an hour ago, that there was a couple of errors in there. So I did just barely send the revised edition. I don't know if everyone has had a chance to see that.
No, they haven't.
Okay. So let me see if I can share that on my screen. I can't.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
So there are two, two articles in the warning that need to be moved forward by the board if you so desire. And then also signed by all the board members so that this, our? Request can go to vote on March 1st for town meeting. And the first is whether or not the voters shall move to create a new school district, the Central Vermont Career Center School District. And then the second is around the, who they should vote for. So I can do the work tonight of filling in all of the district name stuff, everything that's highlighted. You'll notice I didn't highlight in Article 1, it says Berry Unified Union School, that's, that needed to be insert district school here. But basically, the warning should say, shall the voters of the Montpelier Roxbury School District, Public Schools, vote to establish the Central Vermont Career Center School District as described in the Governance Planning Committee Report approved by the State Board of Education on December 15th of 2021? And we'll find out if our 18 sending school towns would like to do that. And then the second one is the follow-up to elect the board members, the at-large board members. Because if you'll remember, six of our board members would be appointed from the school district boards. So somebody from your own board. And then the rest would be at-large from our four largest districts. Everyone across the 18 towns can vote for those people and can sign their petitions. But they have to reside in one of those districts, the largest districts to get that vote. So what we need is for each school district, all six of them, to approve these, this warning. So that we can move forward and have that vote happen on town meeting day.
I move to approve the warning to establish the, or ask voters to establish the Central Vermont Career Center School District.
One second, did? Any discussion?
I have a question. It's the Article 2, is it new board members or members from our board?
Article 2 refers to the at-large members, so those are new board members who would only be working for the Central Vermont Career Center School District.
And, and in addition to that, we will send someone from our board to represent our school district on that board. Was my understanding, is that right, Jody?
Correct.
And so would those names be? In this same? Ballot?
Yes, those names will show up. Basically, anyone in any of the six, the four larger school districts that wants to run, needs to do the same thing that you would do for running for your, for the Montpelier Roxbury. So they would fill out a candidate form and they have to get the 60 signatures on their petition. And so those forms are available on our website and at all of our town clerks.
Okay, and that should be done before?
That would have to be, they have to get that in by January 24th.
Jody, what happens if someone doesn't run from any one of those four? Taps or districts?
You know what, I haven't gone into that report recently enough to see what happens then, I believe we would seek an appointment.
Okay.
I just need one minute.
Do we know if this will be a separate warning or can it be consolidated into our normal? Warning that the board will look at next meeting?
It actually has to be a separate warning.
Which means separate ballots by our towns?
Correct, ours is going to be pink. The, the town clerks have all met to discuss this. We were together on the 28th and so they know that this is happening.
Yeah, so two warrants together?
Yeah.
Any further discussion or questions? That I have here?
Nope, no. Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, excellent. And it was just the one we had to approve, right?
Yeah, thank you, and if, if you end up doing that on the same day that you sign your own warning and warrant, that's fine. We just need to make sure that it gets done in, in the same amount of time as all of the other school district warnings. So thank you.
Jody, did you say we all need to sign it? Jim does.
Any, it's all the boards, right?
Yes.
Just not all the board members, but just all the boards.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jody. One more question.
Sure.
Is that, is the, is that, your budget also be included in the march as a separate thing?
The budget is still going to be the Berry Unified Union School Districts for this school year. Even though it may apply to the new district, it doesn't, it wouldn't fall under it in time, so it's still going to be just Berry City and Berry Town. And again, it doesn't impact the budgets of anyone any differently because the tuition formula still exists. And that's how we'll be using that.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you all, have a good evening.
Thanks.
So Grant, I think we're on to you next.
All right, well, I guess I would start with a question, this is a full briefing, so it's like forty some odd pages or slides. The briefing will be posted on the board's website. But seeing that we don't have any visitors and that all of you have already gone through all these slides. My question is, would you like me to just kind of do an abbreviated version? We'll post the full briefing, but I could just try to hit the high points and go through it quicker than I would normally if there were visitors here.
I think so, I think because we have the full briefing already recorded on Orca, so people can, can watch it and access it. I would just kind of go through and do an abbreviated version and stress any, you know, potential changes or other highlights that, that might be good, but I think that's.
Okay, great, and then.
Good use of everyone's time.
On the 19th, the next board meeting will just be another quick one if there's any changes. And then we'll be approving the budget warrant or warning. And there will be other chat.
Does, does anyone feel differently about that approach?
No, I mean, we'll still be able to ask questions, so.
Yeah.
Sorry, the problem for, we had our last school board meeting, we were over this whole thing. So, so that people can access it if they wanted, like community members today couldn't be here today, but wanted to really go, come back. So just, we can direct them to look at this school board and then just. Where my question is going?
Yeah, so the, the full presentation was given at the first meeting, then it was an abbreviated version. This is a full briefing that we will post the full briefing, we'll just kind of skim through it. But it will be available. The next one will just be highlighting any changes, but the public will get another chance to go through the whole thing because we'll have an informational hearing the day before the vote as well.
Okay, perfect.
And that was December 1st, just for anybody who might be watching right now, that was the December 1st meeting, right? Where you went through the full?
The full thing, yes.
They could find that.
Yep, thanks, man. Christina, if we switch roles, because I can't see people popping in, so if you just let people in. Thanks.
All right, so you've got the presentation in front of you. I think I'm gonna skip to, let's see. How about the changes slide, that's like the seventh or, there we go. So the changes since the last time, equalized pupils, I did change that number. It went down by 26 and a half students, which is a little disheartening. It actually went down by 36 and a half, but we know that there's a correction that the AOE has to make, that's going to be about 10 kids. So right now, my best guess is this 1,234. That drop of 26, it's for various reasons, one of which is, as you recall, that later on, we'll go through what all the steps are in that calculation. It starts with a two-year average for ADM. Last year, when I look at our two-year average for ADM, it looks like last year's number was artificially high by five. And a little personality flaw of mine is if I get good news, I don't question it enough. Because last year, I probably should have pushed back and made sure that the number looked good, so I didn't. I think that was off by about five, which is about five of this 26. 12 relates to our poverty weighting. We had 12 more kids added as a result of poverty than this year. And when I look at this year and I take our total poverty count and I increase, and I multiply it by 0.25, the number this year is right. So last year, once again, it looks like last year there was a calculation problem and we had 12 extra kids in there. So a lot of this isn't anything to do with this year, it has to do with last year. So equalizing ratio is another thing, at the very end, everybody gets hit by like 96% or something to bring all our numbers down. This year's equalizing ratio is lower than last year and that's, that equates to about five as well. And then the other, the other one is pre-K, which is a real decrease, is about four kids. So now that I've dug into it, it looks like this year's number makes sense, it's not good, but it makes sense. I think there's, there were some problems with last year's number. This could be really, a real problem for us because every seven kids is about a penny on the tax rate. So you look at this and you think, oh, that's like four, four cents and, you know, on the tax rate. But luckily, because of the dollar yield being so high, we can absorb this without too much of an impact. The other thing that changed is CLA, if you remember last time, we talked a lot about this and we thought, you know, property values are really a lot higher and maybe we should drop our CLA estimate even more. Luckily, we did, Montpelier came in at 80.76. That's a drop of 3.7 from last year, which is fairly significant, but not over the top. Luckily, we had dropped that to like 78% the last time we gave a briefing. So this was actually better than the last time we guessed at it. Roxbury is a drop of 8.1%, so that's a huge drop. But remember, Roxbury was a very high CLA. So a swing in property values can drop that a lot more dramatically. Because Montpelier, it's been a long, a longer period of time since we had reappraisals. The good news is, the last time we made a guess at CLA for Roxbury, we guessed 94%. So it didn't really impact too much whenever I reran the calculations. We did have some small expense changes based on actual hires for custodial. And health benefits and everything else, it was a bit of an increase that I plugged in. We did go back to Central Vermont Supervisory Union and kind of renegotiated our after-school agreement with them. And we were able to knock that down some, so that was good news. And now on the revenue side, our triple E or early education block grant was a little bit higher than I had previously estimated. So those were all the changes. And the next slide talks about what's left for unknowns. We still don't know for sure the equalized pupil count. My AOE contact said maybe Monday, more likely Tuesday. So we'll see, I should have the best guess that they have by the next time we get together on the 19th, I believe it is. The dollar yield, we've got the best guess that we're going to get until town meeting day, but just as a reminder, that's set by law. So that will change at some point, I think the number we're using is as good as it gets though. The only other thing that's not on there is I did get a note from the AOE saying there might be a minor change to our tech six semester average. Which figures because we got their number and it was exactly what we had been using, so I was all excited. And then they came back and said, oh, maybe there's a change. So it won't be a big deal, it won't even be a full student if there is a change. So next is the at a glance. So if you look real quick, the total budget is still a 4.5% increase, the total education spending is still a 4% increase. What you see as a change is our ed spending per pupil is now about six and a half. And that's only because our, our equalized pupil count is lower than I had before. It's still showing up highlighted in yellow though, because I haven't gotten a real number yet. My hope is that maybe it'll bump up a little bit, but we'll have to wait and see. Probably skip through the enrollment projections, we've discussed that a lot. And the theory of growth. And staffing, I think we'll, we'll hit that as part of the budget changes, I think. Well, actually, could you go back to that, we'll start with that district. The community liaison, we did make a change here because we decided to change that from SRR funds to local funds. So I just wanted to point out that we made the change in the chart here as well. The BCBA, behavior sort of, board certified behavior analyst is suggesting use of SRR 3. Next. At UES, we did switch an academic interventionist from SRR the local to sustain that position. And thrive is one that we're suggesting use of SRR 3. Next. Main Street Academic Interventionist using SRR 3. And then finally, for the high school, another academic interventionist using SRR 3. So if you do the math on that, there are six positions that initially were thought of using SRR funds, whether they're currently filled or were proposed. Of those six, two have been converted over to local funding, so they're sustained already. At some point, we need to figure out though, how we're going to address those other four. And that'll be through future budgets.
All right.
Can we go on? Let's keep going until we get to program expenses, one of two. One more? One more. Okay, so this has been updated just a little bit in the narratives, like the general education talks about the four SRR-funded positions that we still need to work on sustaining. Special education. Talks about the thrive position that we added. Career center tuition, that reflects 22 six semester average kids, which hopefully would be about right. I don't think anything else changed on this. So we can go to the next one. And I don't see anything here, the school board line, just as a reminder, about half of that increase is because we built in some money to build ballots, which is an issue we're still sorting through. Okay, I don't think we need to go into revenues. And honestly, I think capital, we've kind of gone through that enough. So we can just get to the tax rate terminology. So education spending, you know what that means, equalized pupils, so this helps kind of go through what I was trying to discuss earlier. It starts with a two-year average ADM. And then it gets adjusted for factors, like pre-K is only 0.46 instead of a full kiddo. So there's a subtraction for kids that are pre-K. Secondary is an add of, of another, an additional point one three. And secondary is 7 through 12th grade. Poverty is an additional point two five times the number of kids on free and reduced. And then limited English proficiency is a point two for every ELL student. That's the part that was missing, AOE had us as zero kiddos and we know that we have probably about 50. So whenever they rerun it and get our number, then we should get another 10 kids. We talked about the dollar yield, as a reminder, what we're using now is the Tax Commissioner recommendation. And there were two different ones, we're using the more conservative number.
I just want to make sure I heard you right, you're expecting that our equalized people will go up by 10?
But that number was already in here, their number was like 1224 and I added another 10 already. So I'm pretty confident that 1234 should be a good number. But we'll know for sure next.
Okay, thank you.
And we already talked about CLA, that's unknown now. So we can go into the next one, so here's an updated tax rate calculation. Once again, the yellow slides are still kind of unknown, equalized pupils is definitely an unknown. Dollar yield is an unknown to the extent that it will be passed by law after the budget gets passed. CLA is now plugged in. What I did do in the, the little text boxes was I gave you an indication of what the tax rate implication of some of these things are. So that drop in equalized pupils has about a three and a half cent negative tax rate impact. The dollar yield has between 21 and 25 cent positive impact, so that helps the tax rate. And that's 21 would be the impact in Montpelier and 25 in Roxbury. Or I'm sorry, that's switched, 21 in Roxbury, 25 in Montpelier. The merger incentive, absorbing that loss of two cents is about a two and a half cent impact, negative. And then the final note there for CLA, the drop in CLA from Montpelier has a negative impact of 7.6. And because it's a larger drop in Roxbury, that's an 11.9 cent. Negative impact. Next is the the impact for every $100,000 in Montpelier, you can see is actually a drop in taxes of $27. In Roxbury, it's an increase of $33. So if you look at that as far as what the change is, in Montpelier, it's a drop of 2.7 cents. In Roxbury, it's an increase of 3.3. So Montpelier is a decrease of one and a half percent and in Roxbury, it's an increase of 2.3%. So fairly reasonable numbers, I think, as far as tax rate impacts. And as a reminder, it could, it could change depending on the final dollar yield. It shouldn't get worse, I wouldn't think. And another note, about two-thirds of households get an income sensitivity credit. So as a percentage, it would still be the same kind of an increase or decrease, but the impact itself in terms of dollars might be different.
I have a question about the conversation I heard is that we're taking the income sensitivity, that credit is not money that people are getting, it's just a credit that gets to their taxes, is that how that works?
Yeah, you want to take this?
Joe, you want this? We're gonna go around.
It's now gets the dollars sent to them to apply on the property tax bill, so when you get your bill, you see your total bill, but it would be less whatever your property tax credit would be.
So yeah, it's, it's just reduces the amount you have to pay.
So you wouldn't have to pay it all and then get reimbursed or anything like that?
Okay.
But you're, but you see what it is on your tax bill.
And then I just updated the next slide and there's only a few slides left, tax rate history, just for some perspective. We all know that we can't control CLA, so typically, we look at the tax rates without CLA to see how we're doing. And without CLA, you can see Montpelier is actually about 11.8 cents lower for FY23 than the year before the merger. Which is very good. Roxbury, even with CLA factored in, is 21 and a half cents lower than before the merger. So from year to year, you, you might have good news or bad news, but if you look at it across the period of time from before the merger to 23, we're very good, in very good shape. And then just some outlook information. You know, even though we build a budget one year at a time, we always try to look at what the future looks like so that we can try to do smart things each year to stabilize tax rates. Reappraisals, we know are going to hit us next year, so CLA should be a difference next year. In Montpelier, I would think that would mean the tax rates will go down, property values will go up though. Equalized pupil count, we know that the weighting is going to change. It will probably cause a significant decrease for Montpelier Roxbury, but my guess is that they will phase that in, so it won't be a dramatic change in one year, I would hope. Enrollment is fairly stable, we know the high school is still climbing, we know that the Union Elementary School enrollment is, is declining. Overall, we're, we're going to have to continue to look like this year at FTE adjustments to either shift resources or maybe it will be an opportunity for us to convert some of those SRR-funded positions into local so that we can sustain them over the long term. The merger incentive, this is the last year for FY23 that we have to absorb that two cent increase. So that's good news going forward. And then the summary. You know, with, with SRR funding and with that increase in the dollar yield, it allowed us to add a lot of much-needed resources this year, which was excellent, very good for the kids. And very good for the taxpayers because we were able to do that without a big increase in tax rates. I already went through these percentages, the total budget is up four and a half, ed spending because of increase in revenues is only a 4% increase. Because we lost some equalized pupils, that's a big increase, but the bottom line tax rates are very reasonable, even a decrease in Montpelier. And a reasonable increase for Roxbury. That's it, in this very abbreviated version of the briefing, plenty of time for you to ask any questions.
Questions for Grant? Thank you again.
Question? The, the, this sort of the circumstances around that renegotiation of the after-school program, just sort of, how that? after-school program, just sort of how that comes about and what's involved and.
Don't want me to start? Shut up when I got.
I asked, just to add to that, so it's in one question. I was just curious if that renegotiation was gonna result on a change in programming or how it would impact or if it would be back to via S R three and just how that might affect the students.
No.
Programming.
Really what it boils down to is when we first merged, we went into the Bridges Program for After-School Roxbury. When we first merged, they were doing a, what's the grant?
Twenty-one C.
Twenty-one, twenty-first century grant was, was able to pay for a lot of that. And buried in page like eighty-one said how much we were gonna have to pay as a school district, and it was like ten thousand dollars. And then it just said future years will be negotiated or determined. Well, that ten jumped up to, I believe the initial number was like twenty-five the next chapter, and we said, oh, we can't do that. We said, we can do fifteen, but no more than that. Then fifteen went to seventeen and a half, then went to twenty. And based on Libby's leadership, we basically just went back and said, can you walk us through this and help us explain? Or help us to be able to explain why we went from ten thousand to twenty-two and a half thousand dollars in FY twenty-three? Can you give us some backup? Tell us how much other districts are spending or other schools are spending. And basically, as a back and forth to that, it was revealed that there wasn't any great analysis behind what we were being asked to provide. And so we basically reset it back to the original ten thousand. And we were informed basically that the only real expense was the coordinator that was coming out of district funds for Central Vermont. And so a fair share of that really would be around the ten to ten thousand two hundred dollars for us. And they agreed that that would be fair. So we were able to drop it all the way back down to ten thousand two hundred. It doesn't represent any kind of change to programming or services to kids.
And in fact, they're writing us into the next twenty-one C grant. They're writing Roxbury into it, which will share up bridges for, what is it? You would know, four years? Five years?
So that grant is gonna be restarted. I know that there was concern among the number of family members that could afford bridges with the grants that cost per student were to go up, it would be a hardship for a lot of families, and I don't know.
There is no change to that unless, unless it's changed by Central Vermont.
There is a reapplication process that needs to take place. It's not a guaranteed grant. It's a competitive grant process where the district wants to go back in and reapply for the money. So it's not rubber stamped, but as far as I know, twenty-one C is not on the federal chopping block. So it's likely, but not guaranteed.
Thank you.
Anything else? Yep, you mentioned, or you had in your slides, the equalized pupil count that, that's going down twenty-six, right? Coupled with the fact that the budget's going up, the, the ed spending is going up. Our ed spending per pupil is, it's kind of six point two, right? That's what we have over here, eighteen thousand two hundred fifty-two. I was just curious, is there a, I could be completely off, off base here, but is there a that impact spending too much per pupil as compared to the other schools or the districts in the state? And is there a penalty that we get because of that? And how close are we? Where, where do we rank in terms of?
It's an excellent question, and I'm pleased that I have an excellent answer. So the excess, there is an excess penalty threshold that
I saw it on the Roxbury.
In FY eighteen, the year before we merged, Roxbury exceeded that threshold, which is why their tax rate was so high. But we're at, what was it, eighteen? Eighteen two fifty-two. Right now, the AOE has said that for FY twenty-three, the excess spending threshold is nineteen thousand nine seventy-seven?
I think it's one.
Just under twenty thousand.
Yeah, one of the slides you have in the notes.
Yeah, we're, we're in great shape, so we do.
What's, so we're, we're obviously coming close to that, right?
Well, it's two thousand, it's almost two thousand.
Thousand dollars?
Yeah, like seventeen hundred and something like that. So per student, which is a lot. So I'm, I'm not at all worried about exceeding the excess spending threshold for that. Yeah, if you, what Christina was just saying is, is true. It's, that's, this number is probably a pretty average number, okay, statewide.
I have a question. Was there an increase on the ELL programming because of our families in those reflected here?
Yes, as a matter of fact.
No, we increased it prior to our new family, but then that just justifies it. We're gonna increase it.
This year.
This year.
Because we may have two.
Yeah. Oh, I didn't know about a second family.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we planned on doing that because it's a need now.
Yes, so the, what was it, point four or point six?
At point six, and we need to increase it to point four in order to get to a one point oh. Do you know when the new family, we can talk about that later.
Other questions?
All right.
Thank you.
So next, thank you. Next time, we will have a actual budget for you to approve with the warning you to approve and sign, and then we'll sort through the other warning for CDC as well.
Actually, can I have one, one more granular question? Is it, this is very granular. Is there coffee here for teachers at UES?
Coffee?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's curd machines.
I think they even have a fancy brew thing that they.
No, that's here at MHS. The teachers got that here at MHS at UES. I actually, I gave, I gave them personally a curd last year.
Yeah, they need pots.
They can order, they have that in their budget.
I want more of those.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
So next, we have comments on the budget, which I don't think anyone's jumped in on. Okay, so we will.
Those were S R comments.
There.
I think, I think we actually had scheduled time for public comment because there were came for the presentation. There are us. So we are way ahead of schedule, which is not the worst thing in the world. Second reading on of the policy D seven, special education. Any comments or changes or edits to that?
I would just add that we're still waiting for the manual from the AOE, so we are hoping to write a little context at the beginning, but until we see the manual, we can't really move to the work of doing it because we don't know what it is.
I'm not sure you'll see that soon.
Delay this.
Well, we are supposed to have it adopted by today. Apparently, they did get an extension to submit the manual, but we haven't seen the actual thing. That's just a thing that we also get an extension, so maybe, maybe we should just adopt it and then go back once we have the manual, just to be on the compliance side. It's what I would recommend. I don't know, Jim.
If we were to put a link or if we were to add the wording from the manual, it's just to bring it to the board as a reading, does it have to go through three readings again? Is it that major a change?
I think, yeah, it's probably yes, if we're actually gonna make changes to the policy. But we can do that. I mean, this is not a topic we just put it on the.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be largely compliant for a couple of weeks.
So what you'd be recommending is put the third reading on for next agenda. And then we won't have it before February, so improve it first in February and then bring it back for when we get it.
Do we have any sense of when that'll be?
Well, we are adjourned, but I just, one thing I do on a couple of things. Next meeting, in addition to approving the budget, we're also having the several members of our legislative representatives come in. So we're gonna set up a roundtable. You know, so good thought to questions you want to ask them. I think Libby's strong, strong desire is that we send a message that in this time of keeping our heads above water, that, that new mandates is, are not something we're looking for, but rather really support legislature to get us through, you know, the time of shortages and, and difficulties. Yeah, obviously, you can ask your own questions and bring your own mandates, but that, that's Libby's sentiment, certainly the sentiment I share at this, at this time. And then, yeah, other questions, Joe, there's, there's clearly some, you know, major discussions going around about equalized pupils and waiting that to be more equitable. So if you have questions around those.
Pensions.
Pensions.
Who's coming? Sorry, I didn't hear the first part.
Several members of our legislative.
Are coming to our board meeting.
Coming to our board meeting. I have to go back and see. It's, it's gotta be most of them.
They all said yes.
I think they all said yes. I don't know if I've heard from Jay Hooper yet.
And one note on that, we're supposed to be in Roxbury at the next board meeting. We switched that around just for space. Because there's a space challenge at Roxbury. If you wanna do what we want to do with circles and stuff, so the next board meeting with the legislators will be here in the library, and the, the meeting after that will be at Roxbury. Okay.
Yeah, so give thought to again, you know, questions or, or comments you want to deliver.
Are we asking them to provide us with any information?
Definitely send things you want me to ask them ahead of time. I'm just gonna give up a general request to talk about issues that they think are pertinent to boards. Yeah, I know Mary Hooper especially is involved in the education committee. You know, I think Andrew Perslick has been pretty deeply involved in this as well. So we've got a couple, couple of members who are really up on. So I'm. Yeah, so I'm, I'm gonna encourage them to give us an overview of what they see being on the plate that we should, should be concerned about, but as far as the information exchange, but yes.
And so the board knows, I testified yesterday to the Senate Ed with the, all the V's, VBA, V SBA, PSA, and the Teachers Association. We were pretty frank about the situation at schools right now.
Was that recorded?
Yeah, yeah, right. I'm at the end.
It's actually pretty good to look at that video because Secretary French gave an overview of all the stuff. We just like to kind of be.
Yeah, the challenges are pretty steep. Currently in France, they just found a virus today that's a lot more spreading than Omicron, so.
That's excellent news, Jim.
Grab under your chairs.
Please, my day today, that's just excellent.
So I do, I do believe, I didn't get to hear all of it, but that in the state of the state, the governor was proposing possibly using some of the ed fund balance to send to school districts for career development stuff. I don't know if that would be something we'd want to kind of, we also the follow-in. You guys know, if you hear anything, if you don't hear it, but by that time, maybe when the lawmakers agree, they might be interested in our thoughts on that. And it's almost like it requires more administrative attention at all, then can it wait?
I, I think that's a good message to deliver. And yeah, sometimes, you know, small, good things can be, the thing, the straw that breaks the camel's back, and you're like this, so.
Unless you can just give it to the, our new career center district.
I would like to think this through just because I, I wanna find a kind of balance of a line between our emergency and the pandemic reality, but also how that relates to what kids are facing today as well. The increase in bullying, harassment, the case of mental health problems. So you know, saying no new mandates, whatever, we have this money, and we, we have black personnel, like, like all of these things, and and so I, I grapple with that. I grapple with, our teachers are really tired and I support them, and I want, you know, all the districts, I know that you're working a lot, and that everybody, you know, it's doing a lot, but I also grapple with that and the fact that our kids are behind, our kids, you know, our bullying is increasing and kids are suffering, and so and families are suffering. So like, how do we move that balance of that urgency for the reality that problems that we have before, before the pandemic continue to be problems and even tires, you know, they come out. And just like from me being on the ground with people, like I, I just grapple with that. Like, you have a very different sense of urgency than I have with the people that I work with. So it's, it's kind of like this anxiety that we both have around, like, yes, and, yes. And so how do we support the kids? Even if like what we're thinking about is like, how do we, what is it that we need to do to be able to grapple with our reality and take it into account other communities, stuff that can happen to alleviate that, right? Like, how do we bridge those things? And how do we think of transformation? And how do we think of healing together versus? So that's, I just want us to grapple with that conversation in our head. Now I'm excited to bring it up, but now, but kids are suffering and really bad, so. And then our teachers are and superintendents, and everybody's tired, but you know, that is the reality that.
I think that's a good point in the workforce challenges, because I'm thinking, what would it take, right? Because we do have money, but there's not like the bodies to do the work at the children's unit or at the schools, like. So how can we use this opportunity? Like, I know that they're talking about investing in like nursing, because there's a nursing shortage, but there's also clearly a shortage of education professionals. And is it like a loan forgiveness? Is it a training program? Is it like that alternate pathogen? Or like, are there things that we can do? Because we actually do seem to have the financial resources at this time that we really need it, but we can't find the people to serve that goal. So that's, it's a good point. I don't know what we could ask them to do, but I want to make sure that the workforce is not just narrowed down and oversimplified, that it very much is also education workforce, I think. And they're the same people who can't afford to buy a house in Vermont and can't afford, you know, can't, can't work without childcare. They're the same folks, and so it's all tangled into that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great point. I think the way I grapple to my mind is I really think now's the time to start thinking about things we can do outside of schools and placing new burdens on schools to alleviate pressures. Those are great ideas. Make it, you know, make it easier for, you know, for teachers to, to get masters, to get qualified, to have their debt forgiven. Beef up services that, that support schools, because we ask a lot of our schools. So beef up those services outside of schools that in a lot of countries are much more developed than they are here. Yeah, you know, increase our mental health services outside of schools, increase accessibility, decrease costs. I, I think those are great things to ask for and kind of, you know, paint the problem that when you, you know, put so much pressure on schools, those fault lines start to show in a pandemic. those fault lines start to show in a pandemic because.
I mean, Libby's basically our primary position right now. For.
But there is, so there is the community schools bills, which I know that we're not, we don't have the title to apply for it. But you know, that community schools, like thinking of like that model of all those services, all those connections. Who like community schools have proven in some states to work and, and some of those things. So like, just thinking for our district to think about, about that. It's like, what are the relationships we need to increase with the local community here that can support this events? After school programs, what, you know, whatever it is that we are going to need to make this pandemic believable for some of these families.
Does Washington County Mental Health have a relationship with the student system that's active?
We have a complicated and small relationship with Washington County Mental Health, which is probably a different board meeting. However, they're just briefly, their business model that they have is a pod model that places like central Vermont buy a pod. They can't staff it. But in that pod comes behavior interventionists and, and people with it, right? But they can't staff their full pot. And if, and it's very expensive. And if you don't have that level of need for a pod, then basically they say, we don't service you. So we can call them when we have a significant need for a child for Choice Academy or something like that. And if there is a spot, then they will talk to us. There are no spots for those services right now. So we, because we don't buy a pod and because they have no spots in theirs, in the school that they run, we have very limited conversations with Washington County Mental Health. Unless a student already has that. And we have, we have a very small amount of kids who have that relationship. Now, I have understood though, that we've been able to, through community networks, we've been able to get some kids some services pretty quickly that are connected to Washington County Mental Health, which is really good. Right? But we don't have a thriving partnership. I couldn't call them on the phone and say, hey, we need help. What can you do for us? They, they probably wouldn't talk to me.
Because historically, the community agencies are, they essentially pay horrible. And so nobody stays. And so.
Yeah, they don't have the staff. Yeah.
Right. The community work that, that is so essential to keeping people out of the hospital, providing services to, to, when people are at this stage of their mental health challenges as opposed to complete crisis.
Yep.
It just doesn't really happen.
They're primarily funded by the state.
Right. That's, I mean, I don't know.
That's the, that's the conversation I would like the legislators to have. How do we fund that? That piece so that, that our community mental health association can be thriving? So we can have a thriving partnership because the current business model doesn't work for schools of our size or districts of our size.
I would also argue that there is mental health and there's mental health, right? Like you can have a punitive mental health system that is not going to support the students the way that we want them. And there is healing systems that take into it a lot more things than just like a therapy session or like a emergency psychiatric visit. So, so this is why when I think about transformation, about it, it's about thinking of the systems. And I, I know Julia, you guys know Julia Shifit. She wrote a letter back last year about signed by 17 local therapists that said, you know, here's the things that we're seeing. And she created a program with Ryan Herity at UES that got taxed like really, you know, like in this first year at UES. It was like, oh my God, we have no more space. And so for you guys that are new, and it was like a local system where therapists were able to say, hey, we have a kid in need, who can take this kid? And then, you know, it was like a referral system done by them. So something like that, that we can think about, like, how do we increase it? Just getting, we can't go back to the same thing we'd be doing and then failing again, even if we have a million dollars. Those systems sometimes don't fail. So I, I just, I love the community here in Montpelier. And I know there's so much love and giving and desire to make all these things work that even for our legislature, you know, like I cannot say the same thing for like some other towns, but yeah, just grappling with that. I just don't want us to close the door on ants and saying we don't have it. We, is that for Libby to think on her own because she's already taxed. So for us to also help to think about what, what, what could it take? We are the ones talking to the community and knowing the community that is here. So
Yeah, no, I think those are all good points. Like definitely need to think proactively about how to make things better and but also be mindful of the effect that those have and make sure that they're helping and not, not creating creating work that right now is really hard to do. And the other thing I wanted to mention, thank you Rep for volunteering to the odd, the committee that Nathan is putting together. We still need one more brave soul to to volunteer for that. So just putting that call out again. If you don't want to jump now, but, but definitely think about it. I think given that, that red son from Roxbury, that probably means that one of the Montpelier rights would be ideal.
I'm sorry, what committee is?
It's the Committee for Nathan's Visioning Process.
Oh. Or something in schools.
No, I, I know everyone is, is a.
I heard another person today. We're getting them out.
Yeah, but definitely, definitely think about it. So and I think if someone did it, we might be open to excusing that person from another committee perhaps. Especially if it's, it's a committee where there's some redundancy. So all right. Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, just quickly, I sent out the little flyer for the community sessions for next week. If you have any feedback on F17 tonight. Thankfully we could send, I often do, Anna, that's okay with you? So send, and I'm wondering if there is a way to send it in your list, just for everybody.
We, you know what, Anna, we can talk afterwards, but we can talk afterwards about some ideas I have.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
The the statute or guideline or rules that say that Roxbury has to perform certain things like mailing ballots or allowing on citizens about whatever the, whatever the topic is, that it has to be the same as Montpelier? Is that in Act 46 or is that in our specific chart?
I think neither of the above. I think it's, I think the ones around voting are, are separate voting laws of the state.
At state level.
Yeah.
So maybe that could also be potentially a topic for discussion at our next meeting because I really, I really have concerns that Montpelier constituency has an intention, passes it, and then is held up if, because Roxbury doesn't feel the same way. And then maybe, you know, we can make many efforts to try to get people together and, and have compromise or whatever you want to call it, but the likelihood that they'll always see things the same is not high for every issue. And I, and I think it's unfortunate if you know, the will of one group is, is, you know, stopped by the will of a super minority, you know, what I mean? That feels wrong. So I don't know.
That would be a great topic.
I think that's a, yeah. Agree. It's a fantastic topic.
I mean, sure, it's a problem all across. If that's, that's the rule everywhere, then it must be holding up a lot of progress.
Yeah. And I, and I think especially the idea of, you know, consolidating districts means that you put, you know, some small towns in the big towns and you know, small towns have a, a real uh, you know, allegiance to and history of town meeting. And it's just not really practical in a place like Montpelier. So that seems like you can structure the law so that doesn't become an impediment or, or a question.
Can I just really quickly, because I feel like a point of clarification with regard to the legislature, but I feel like I'm, I've heard from Libby and other superintendents and principals, et cetera. My understanding is that the request isn't, you know, don't do anything at all. Don't put on our plate one more unfunded mandate.
You're sorry.
Super, super thin. It's not, don't, you know, invest in various systems of support for our communities of kids. It's, schools have been stretched very thin for a very long time, but they cracked them for a very long time because we've put, we've turned our school systems into reservoirs for so much of our public policy shortcomings and social shortcomings that yeah, my understanding.
Yeah, I, I think that's absolutely it. I mean, really, you know, focus on not just dealing with the crisis, but I think dealing with the healing and the restoration that needs to occur, but do, do it in a way that that understands restraints and doesn't say, you know, here's six new things that the superintendent needs to implement in April.
Are, are there things that are being asked for to make it more attractive for recruiting educators and education professionals?
Yeah, we all talked about that. If you watch the testimony, then, or and you read GD, am I, so I testified with Genie Collins, who's a superintendent down in Rutland. And.
That's from today, the testimony.
Yesterday. And Jeff Bannon talked about it at length. I believe Jay Nichols did too. I can't remember exactly from the VPA. But we all talked about different ways. So for instance, one genie brought up, there's a, you know, clause in teachers retirement. They can only work so much time in order to get their pension. And right now there's some retired teachers who really want to fill gaps in the workforce, but they can't because they can't work so long. So she was like waive that for a year. Something you can do really easily. Just waive it for a year or two. So that's just an example of, of how we could get through this stoppage quickly through work of the legislator that would really help us. I mean, there's others ideas too.
Senate Ed, not.
Senate Ed, yeah.
Is it a show?
Can I move to different wrap up topic?
Yes.
I just felt really compelled to acknowledge the news that we got this week about our 80% vaccination rate. I think any victories we can acknowledge and appreciate is worth noting. I continue to be really impressed by the quality of education that my kiddo is getting. The quality of communication we get from her principal and from Libby. And then even just tonight, we got a note about like checking interest on booster clinics. I mean, the, the list goes on and I just think we, I, I would like to just publicly acknowledge, and I know a lot of families feel really grateful. We're in this school district or missing. And I just can't say enough about our gratitude for you and your team and all those parents who are volunteering to do testing and the communication is such a reassuring at a time that's still really hard to be a parent during all this stuff. And I just really wanted to express my gratitude to you for like.
And we got enough interest. We'll have that booster clinic probably the week of the 17th.
And that's a big deal. A lot of districts are not doing anything like.
I was, after my day today, I was on the horn of the beach. Saying, I need a booster clinic now.
A lot of districts are not doing. They're like, kids, you need to outdo this.
I just know we've, we've spent so much time hearing about the huge strain on our teachers in the classroom. But for what it's worth, their efforts are, are paying off because I do, from my small place and what I hear from other families. They're still getting a really good quality experience and getting challenged on top of being safe. So our teacher anxiety level is, is skyrocketing right now.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So be nice to a teacher. Give him a hug. Send him a chocolate bar.
Anything else? Okay, come, come, come to some good, good thoughts and questions for next week. Come prepared to approve a budget and keep the K95 mask on and stay safe and get boosted if you don't already. And get your 1215, even if we don't, we're gonna have a clinic, but I think even before that, you can take your kiddo up to one of several locations and get them to, to, that's going to be important. All right. Motion to adjourn.
So who?
Second.
Second.
Pause a favor. Great. Have a good night.